Hey, we are now in business, School Board of Putnam County, the Budget Workshop. Mrs. Odom, if you will come.
I have just little handouts, but if y'all want them, if you're not looking at the screen, it's just...
I do both.
Y'all want one?
Yes.
There's a few more. I think I printed out ten or so.
You give me one more, Holly.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
He said yes.
Oh, one more.
One more.
One more, okay.
One more.
Where are they going?
And I'm constantly doing this, because when I look up there, I need the glasses, but when I look down, yeah, I gotta take them off, because it's blurry.
Yeah, I kinda like that, too.
Alright, so I guess we'll get started. We're gonna briefly discuss the budget today. Jonathan and I talked about whether he would present, or I would present, or we'd tag-team each other. We worked on the presentation together and decided just this morning that I would preside over this budget workshop as my last official budget workshop with the district, so I'm the lucky one. I wanna begin by stating that we are not near at the point that we were last year when we did our last budget workshop. If you'll recall, last year, we did it on July 24th, which was the same day that we were presenting to you all the balanced budget to go be advertised in the newspaper. Today, we're gonna talk about the new year budget somewhat, but right now, it's at the point where it's like, I'll use Laura's words, it's like a giant jigsaw puzzle right now. There's so many moving parts. The actual process of the budget takes actual months to do, and we're still in a current fiscal year. There's still a lot of things that are gonna happen. We have allowed the schools and the departments to put on their budget requests. We know what our general fund budget is as far as state and local revenue goes. We estimate the other pieces of revenue that comes in, like interest income, or indirect from federal programs and school food service, things along those lines. We base that off of how much we collected the prior year, so we have already started inputting all of that. But we still have like a large monthly payroll this week. Tomorrow, everybody gets paid, all the 12-month people. There's a run of bills that'll post tomorrow, too. We pay every Thursday. There's also two weeks into July where we're going to do a payables payroll, and that's for people that are on a two-week holdback, and that's some of our classified people. There will be a leave payout payroll for anybody that is retiring June 30th that gets paid out for their, all their sick leave and 60 days of vacation. There is a sick leave buyback for those that are qualified and wanna participate. They can sell five days of their sick leave back at an 80% cost. All that will be done by July 15th, and those expenditures post back to June 30th to match expenditures to the appropriate year. We'll post accounts receivable for revenue that we know we're receiving for this fiscal year that might not have come in just yet, even where we do invoices to the charter schools for them to pay for their share of transportation, things along that line. So there'll still be more revenue that'll be booked. Like I said, at the last budget workshop, about 13 months ago, we already had that balanced budget. We had already been through all these steps, and we did it July 24th, so everything had been posted, so I was able to give you a balanced budget. Right now, we're not to that point. Then, at that workshop...
The charter schools, other than transportation, what services do we provide them that would...
That's the only thing that we invoice for. Laura, you might could talk about some of the instructional things that are provided to charter schools that we're required to provide for them, but the only thing that we actually invoice and the school board approve the methodology of that, we provide transportation to them, and we invoice them for that.
They get a portion of the grants that we write, so we sit down with them, and they denote what they would like to do with their portion of the grant, of other grants. And then, we do provide support services for them. In the case of, through District Police Department, Ms. Wood is their liaison, so as we have questions or concerns, or any time that they need support, we work, we have an administrative person who helps support them with any of their reports they need to write. We do have, they have to be, they have to have a K-12 plan as well, reading plan, that will, well, reading plan will come to you next month. They must write your own, but they probably need help writing their own. So they could be a part of ours, but they don't have the same materials we have. They've chosen other materials, so they have to write their own. So we'll provide administrative support to help them write them. Those are not things we charge for.
Right. And that was the kinda things I was talking about. I know there's a lot of services that we do provide to them, but as far as I know, transportation is the only thing that they are charged for. I think they work out something with school food service. We do provide their meals and everything, but Nikki gets her, yes, Nikki gets her money back through the Department of Ag and everything.
But we do provide ESE services.
Yeah, we also provide ESE services, but they are not charged for those as well.
And is that other than the Children's Reading Center and...
Pause.
And what?
Pause.
Yeah.
Putnam Academy.
Middle School. That's it?
So, we're going to charter school system.
Okay.
So, when we do come back, and we have set the date for July 24th, and I forgot to email you those dates. I got my trim package last week, so July 24th will be the meeting to get your permission to put the ads in the newspaper. So when we come back that day, we are required by statute to have a balanced budget, and we will. And so it'll be a nice, pretty neat little package that we give to you, whereas today, I'm just gonna tell you pretty much how, where things stand. I've mentioned to you all in the past how July is our absolute busiest time of the year, where for some, you know, it might be their slowest time, and they do the four 10-hour days and have a three-day weekend. We actually work seven days a week, 12 to 16 or 18 hours a day. July is massive for finance, and it's because of all the guidelines and all the trim timelines that you have to have to get everything done in a very tight period of time. So it's a rough time. Not fun, but to somebody like me, it is fun, because you like to see a plan come together, get the numbers to balance. When you first look at it, it looks horrendous, and there's no way this is gonna work, but once you work on it, and you do have to cut at places and things like that, but once you do all that, and you've got a balanced budget that you can present, then it's a very productive time. So today, we're gonna talk mainly about the general fund, as it's the operational fund of the district. We have 64 funds total. That includes general, debt, capital, special revenue, which includes the title fund, school food service, IDEA, and the ESRA funds that we still, are still ongoing, which will soon be ending. We have the internal funds, which includes Nefec funds and our group insurance fund. We have the permanent trust funds, which includes Gilbert and Wilkes down at Crescent City, and we have the enterprise funds, which are all Nefec. And many of these funds have multiple projects within them. The general fund alone has 110 projects, and each of those projects and each of those funds have to be balanced at year-end, and most project and funds are carryover, and so the money has to stay with them, and we have to budget the carryover, and it's a very time-consuming test, and it's not automated. So it takes, takes a lot of time. So I wanted to start off basically by updating everyone on our financial condition ratio, and this is actually determined at the end of each fiscal year. And at the end of the auditing period, the Auditor General publishes a report on each school district's annual financial report. Within that report, they tell what the financial condition ratio of the district's general fund is, and it includes all assigned and unassigned fund balances. So that's gonna be your 3% fund balance that you're required by statute to have, and it's the unreserved fund balance that rolls back at the end of the fiscal year, ever what money we didn't spend that year. It may be that we collected more revenue than we had budgeted for, or it may be that we didn't spend our entire budgets, and that happens a lot, especially with like teacher vacant fees and things along those lines. The Auditor General also publishes a separate report called Significant Findings in Financial Trends of All Florida School Districts that tells the Florida School District average financial condition ratio. It's always lagging one month behind, because the Auditor General, they audit every year certain school districts, if you meet a certain requirement as far as number FTE, but the larger school districts, they only audit once every three years, and those school districts are required to have CPA firm do their audit. So it takes them a while to compile all data, so when they compile it, their state average is one year behind. So if you can see from this chart, for '21-'22, we actually overcame the statewide average for the first time in history of keeping up with this chart, and I started keeping it in 2006, '07. We had a 13.3 financial condition ratio, and '21-'22, and the state average was 11.58. Our financial condition ratio for '22-'23 was 14.30, and the state average of school districts have not been published yet. It, the report, it's not up here, but the report also notifies how many school districts have fallen below the 3% fund balance reserve. In their last published report for '21-'22, there were no school districts there, and the year before, there were once, there was one school district in that category, but they put together a plan and worked with DOE and got back up to the 3% minimum required. Over time, there's been as many as five in that category, and when they go below 2%, I think we all know that the state comes in and takes over, you know, their finances and works through to try to get them. That's happened in the past. Was it Jackson County, I believe?
Jefferson.
Jefferson, that's right. So that has happened, but Putnam has never been below the 3, and I had always planned that it would never go below, and I hope that continues to maintain and carry on that way.
So what, what is it gonna be this year, you think? Just, I mean, has it ever been above 3?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We ended the year, when we had that financial condition ratio of 14.3%, that's pretty much what it was. We had a total overall fund balance of more than that. That was, I think it was 19%, but that include carryover projects. It included encumbrances, and it included inventory, which are not true spendable things. If it's a carryover encumbrance, that's a purchase order, that money is already obligated, so it's really not in that category where it's unassigned. It's assigned for a specific reason. So we ended, I think it was 19.1% last year, total fund balance, but as far as these financial condition ratio, because they only look at certain categories of it, it was that larger amount. So next up, we'll talk about our current financial status in the fiscal year that we're in, because really, we operate in the fiscal year that supposedly ends June 30th, but we're still working in it a lot of times as far as the finance part, not the budget part, all the way to August up to the end of August with grants closing, final FA 399's being done, a lot of times chargebacks having to be done, but we give them a deadline, because any time a chargeback from one grant to another is done, it affects the carryover budget of those grants. So if they do it after I've already done the budget, I have to make changes, and so we try to give them a deadline that we stick to. Currently, in the year that we're in, we've spent 82.6% of our general fund budgeted expenditures, and we've collected 96.7% of our general fund budgeted revenue. As I mentioned early, earlier, we still have all those things to accomplish this year before we can close out the year, and I didn't add, but I should've added things like chargebacks. It's not really general fund stuff. Occasionally, there's a charge to the general fund if a grant runs out of money and can't make their last payroll or something like that, but those are your main things that are still outstanding. We do expect a healthy fund balance role for the general fund for this year, but I tried to estimate it, but there were too many uncertainties, too many unknowns, because even on bills, you, there's no way to estimate. We have some weeks of bills where it may be 200,000 in the general fund, another week maybe 5 million. You don't know what's coming down the pipe and what somebody's gonna turn in to get paid, the timing of it exactly. So we do expect a healthy fund balance role, but we also expect rising expenditures because of increased costs in retirement, utilities, subs, insurance, and by that, I mean property insurance, additional personnel from ESRA that we brought into the general fund. So there's a lot of different things that have moving parts here.
So are you gonna go into more detail about the ESRA staff?
A little bit here, and...
How did you fund that, or what?
I've got, I think I've got a little bit built into this, and it may be that, and Tara's currently working on salary and benefits. We budget by person, so I've got a preliminary total budget, but again, it's a little bit too early for me. I know what the cost of that is, but I don't know, you know...
So what Jonathan presented to us a couple of months ago, showing that that would be 3 million plus, that that's probably a...
I've got a, I've got a slide to, that when I get to, I think it's the retirement rate slide that shows the increase in cost of salaries. But I wanna talk about the FEFP shortly. Right now, that's, we already know what our new year FEFP is gonna be, and that's the Florida Education Finance Program, and that's where we're notified of the entire amount of state funds and local funds that we're going to receive. Even though they're local funds, they, in the FEFP, they put what our property value is, they put what our required local millage is and everything, so that's where we get our initial budget. The only thing in the general fund that we add after that are the categories, like I mentioned earlier, interest income, getting, for federal grants, getting our, what's the word I'm looking for, indirect cost and from school food service, so there's not, and Medicaid administrative claiming, so there's a few other little pockets of income, but the majority of our funds come from state and local, and we get it through the FEFP.
The indirect funds on the, on the federal grants, what does it run, 2% to 3%?
It should be higher than that. We were...
It's been, it's been higher, but my last year, senior county position, I wanna say it dropped like 2%, but then the very next year, which is coming here, went right back up.
Yeah, it's a little over 5% right now, if I'm not mistaken, and it does change every year, and it, it's a big, it's a plan that you have to put out, and it looks at your prior year AFR, it looks at expenditures in different categories, and then it has to be sent to DOE. They have to approve the plan, then it comes back, and you all approve the, the rate and everything.
And it can be different for different grants. For example, I think all of ESRA, no matter which year, was capped at 5, I believe, whereas our normal rate at the time was 5.XX.
That's true. So some grants do have a max in there, and others are...
You feel comfortable that covers all our costs, our indirect costs?
It's all we're allowed to take, so I...
It would be how big the grant is, like with ESRA, potentially, because we had a lot of money from ESRA, but some other smaller grants, no, not necessarily.
So if you had a $19 million grant, what would it cost, 10% indirect cost?
Potentially. I mean, I know we, one of our positions, one of my senior county positions spends all of their time just about on nothing but the grants through federal programs, so theoretically, you could argue a lot more than that, right? But also, if it's a $19 million grant, and 9 million of it is up capital, you're not getting anything for that.
Yeah, you don't get, you don't get indirect on capital expenditures, but, you know, payroll department's paying the people, accounts payable is paying all their bills, HR is handling all their personnel, hiring them, our insurance department's handling the insurance, the purchase order, purchasing department's handling all their purchase orders, and fixed assets being tagged and everything. So it, it takes a village, you know, to get all that done, so a true, true cost.
We do that for all our grants and all the grants that Nefec gets, correct?
Yes, yes. And one, it's a different accountant that handles the Nefec grants, right?
Yes. I was handling all of them, and then when I came up, we kind of made both of our accounts on the same level, and so we split the grant work between the two. Nefec was handled by one, and federal government was handling it.
Rhonda, just off the top of my head, thinking back, how many years have you been elected as the President of the Florida School Finance Directors Association?
Actually, the President, you go up through the ranks, so I was the actual President. One year of that, and one year of Florida School Boards Association. I was on the Board of Directors for probably 12 years. I was in the position of Treasurer, Secretary, Vice President, President-elect, President-at-large, Director of both organizations. I'm currently on the Finance Council, which is the group of, a select group of about 18 CFOs who meet regularly with DOE and the governor's staff, and I've been on the Finance Council for 12 years now. I just attended my last meeting in June, and...
I felt like it was important to have that in the record for those that just don't understand what we're doing here and what goes on, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I've talked to my group quite often and tell them the importance of meeting with their peers and getting that network built and everything. Not many from the office go to things like that. Jonathan is now currently on the Board of FSFOA and on the Board of Florida Association of School Business Officials, and since we're touting a little bit, I was, I was awarded the Florida Association of School Business Officials, Outstanding Business Officer, and I think they sent me to South Carolina to receive the award and everything, so...
And when was this?
That was back in 2020, I believe. I'd have to go back and look for sure, but yeah.
I just felt like it's, it's important to, so people just don't think we're flying by the seat of our pants here, you know? They need to understand what's going on.
Yeah, and it's, it's very important for people, all offices, if you can develop a network of people that you can reach out to, and, you know, they reach out to you. I've been a mentor for the finance, the Florida Institute of, the cohort of people that is training new CFOs who are coming up, and I've been a mentor for Martin County CFO and everything, and Jonathan is now in the program and attending four meetings a year where he's got people like Gretchen from St. John's County and Ron from Miami-Dade. They offer classes, and they do that training to help new CFOs coming on board, because we are looking at a younger generation now, you know? We were just looking at our office this morning, and we walked up, because Justin's, it was his 40th birthday upstairs, and we walked up there to just tell him happy birthday, and it came up, the amount of people, what did you say when you started?
When I started, there were three people, under 40.
Under 40.
Justin's 40, and now it's half of our office.
Yeah, seven or eight people in our office now are under 40, so it's like, you know, it's time for us old ones to move on out and let the new ones come in, and I'm looking forward to it.
Speak for yourself, Rhonda.
Okay.
Those old people wanna hang around for a while.
Well, when I retire in a month or so, I'm looking forward to at least a while of not getting back into the, I'll have the side business, though, so I think I'll stay busy. But let's talk about the base student allocation. That's really, it's the way that we're funded per student, and it's supposed to have always been your flexible fund. You get it in the FEFP, and over, over the years, it's, it's had a large jump. Last year was the biggest jump that we had had, but don't take it at face value. They jumped up over $550 per student, but what they actually did is they rolled some of the categoricals that we're required to do up into the base student allocation, but then they told us, and of course, we knew we had to, they rolled instructional materials, so textbooks, science lab materials, things like that. They rolled it up, but you still have to have textbooks. They rolled the reading grant up into the base student allocation, but you still have to have reading teachers. They did teacher supply money, but they then told us, you have to give each teacher at least $300. Where before, they would give you a dollar amount, and ever how many teachers filled out the paperwork to get it, you would divide that dollar and give them that, but now they said you will do at least $300 per teacher for teacher supply money, but it rolled up to the base student allocation.
And Mrs. Odom, this is based on projected enrollment?
Yes, it starts out being based on projected.
And so if, God forbid, we fall by, say, 100 students under, that money has to be...
Yep, it goes back, and so I will talk about that a little bit and show the declining enrollment and things that we've had to do in the past. Another one was the teacher salary increase allocation. They rolled it up there, too. So even though, you know, it was touted that it was a banner year, and they increased per student funding, base student, per student funding, $550, basically, when you did the math, it was, it wasn't even 100 bucks, because you still had to do every single one of those categoricals that rolled up there. So that pretty much negated that huge increase they were talking about, but even this year, we've got, I can't see my numbers or those numbers, $5,330.98 versus last year's 5,139. That would probably be a true increase, because they didn't move anything else up into base student allocation over what they did last year. On the 2024-2025 conference calculation that was agreed on by the House, the Senate, and the Governor, and then made to be the FEFP first calculation, they initially showed us with a 3,62,093 increase in K-12 funding. However, they were comparing that to the third FEFP calculation instead of the fourth calculation for '23-'24. The fourth calculation came out in May, and that was after the legislature had already prepared the conference report. In the fourth calculation, and y'all will see it in a budget revision coming to you soon, we earned back $311,341 of funding. We had an issue when we got the third calculation. It said we had lost 142 students. I went up to data, I looked at our reports, and data pulls the reports down from DOE, and they did not show that many students lost, so I reached out to Suzanne Priggin and Mark Eggers. They turned it over to their IT team. I said, why isn't the FEFP third calc matching the numbers on these DOE reports they always have in the past? They said they would look into it, so they did find a discrepancy, and in the fourth calc, they gave us back 40, how many students, 42.82 students, so we were still down about 100, but we got back 311,000. So when you compare the fourth calc, which is higher funds, to the new year, you'll see how we actually ended up. It was an increase overall of just 2,750,752, and then when you subtract out the increase in FES scholarships, and we'll have a whole slide on the trajectory of those scholarships over time, but it was 1,402,000 more than the current year, so we lose those funds to the scholarship schools, you know, the private schools or the homeschool parents when they take those funds out. And then, when you take out categoricals that were increased, Safe Schools was increased 122,000 this year, Mental Health, 55,000, the TSIA new money was 639,775, and add on FTE, we get ACE IB, Advanced Placement, so that was an increase in those, and those, that money has to go to those programs, so it's not flexible funds for us to use. So once you take out that 825,000, we were left with this new year budget, total flexible general fund, state and local, because that includes our millage and everything, 522,000. So the way this whole process works, you'll hear it said, Putnam got $3 million. We got 522,000 that we can truly use. It's been that way every year, you know?
Every year.
They get their budgets passed, but there's always strings attached, and when they say an overall increase, when you pull out the different things that you can't do anything with, because they go to specific programs, you're left with flexible funds of half a million dollars. And I'm not sneezing at that, half a million dollars is half a million dollars, but we would've liked a whole lot more. Now, I wanna talk about our FTE over time. We have been in declining enrollment for many years, and as you all know, the FTE, the full-time equivalent student, is what brings in our state, our state funds, not our local, but it's the state funds that help operate the district. We had a high of 12,883 students in the district. January of '96, we are now projected to have 10,210 students in this new year, which is showing us the lowest yet. But we all know that we are growing in the county as far as new businesses, like coffee shop, Wawa, Longhorns, proposed housing development, and a new Publix over in East Palaca. We're, we're building three new schools, so I can envision this trend turning around in the future. If the October counts, FTE counts, and the February FTE counts show more students than this, 10,210, we will receive the additional funding. If it comes in October, they'll give us a half-year funding for those students. If they're still there in February, we'll get the second half year. Alternatively, if there's less students than that, they will reduce our funding also. We hope we won't go lower. I wanna give you an 11-year history of FTE. Why 11 years? I'm not sure. I think I did it last year for 10 years, and so now I'm just adding a year to it. In looking at the FTE, the 11-year history by student type, you can see that the charter schools are fairly stable with a slight increase. The scholarship students are always on the rise after that, the continued expansion. It seems like every year in the legislative session, they add something to expand the program. Current year FES students, and that's a year that hasn't quite ended yet, had been projected at 389, but we received a prior year adjustment for 40 students back, and they were being claimed by private schools, and those schools got the vouchers, but in the counts, the students were actually sitting in our seats. So we're one of many, many districts that followed it and kept saying, but we had these students. These private schools did not. So it took a while to get caught up, so this is for a prior year when they, they gave us back 40 students and gave us the funding back for that, so that's why you'll see on that chart, there's 349. However, they have estimated us to have 503 of FES students for next year, so that's the amount that I have to set aside, so that when they pull it out of our budget, I'll have a place to reduce our budgeted expenditures. They're gonna reduce our revenue, take it away, and I'll have to be able to, someone else will have to be able to balance the budget, and we hope that in our budgeting process, we've got the, we had the... process, we've got the, we had the money to have those set aside so that we don't have to scramble for money, and that's the way we've done it for years now. We are required by law to have a balanced budget at all times and to include all revenue the FEFP shows for all Putnam County students. The charter schools, we pay them monthly. We get payments twice a month from the state for our FEFP, so we get 24 payments a year, and we worked out a deal with the charter schools because you're required by statute to pay them 10 days after you receive funds. We worked it out years ago, and they get paid once a month, so we're actually giving them some of their money a little bit early. We don't necessarily stay, and they all agreed to this in writing many years ago, that they would like the once-a-month payment, and the payment might be two or three days past the 10-day thing, but the second half of their money is well in advance of when they should receive it, so it's worked out good for them. And it keeps, it cuts down on the paperwork of us having to cut two checks, doing all the math and cutting them two checks a month instead of one. But we pay them directly once a month, and the FES scholarship money shows up in our budget until the third calc in May, and then they pull it all out in one lump sum, and you know, and the private schools or the homeschool parents get that money and everything. Now, looking at the scholarships, over six years, our scholarship funds have grown from $354,000 in 2018-'19 to estimated at $4.481,905 for this year that starts next week. The amount of funding and students are included, like I said earlier, in our beginning FEFP. As a third calc, they do take it out, but I always have to have that entire amount of revenue in my budget in order for it to balance, and if you try to submit the budget without it in there, DOE kicks it out and says, "Your records do not match our records." So your budget has to match the state and local that is in the FEFP to the penny, or it gets kicked out. So I'll have to include it all, and then, like I said, they'll take it out and they'll send an adjustment to the FEFP and show where we've been reduced $4.4 million, and so then I reduce, we do a budget revision, reducing revenue and the expenditure side because you have to keep it balanced. I do a set aside for this, and have done it for years, and it's helped tremendously instead of being frantic and saying, "Where is this money going to come from?" And the union understands this. The union sees that set aside, but they know it's not money that's available to them to use because the district doesn't truly own that money either. It's going to go to these private schools. This year, in the FEFP documents, they estimated how much they expected us to be given up, but they also set aside a pot of funds. They did it last year too. That was the first year. They called it the state-funded discretionary supplement. It's total statewide, they set aside $350 million, and our share of it, $987,542. Now, I have to include that as revenue, but we don't truly receive it unless our FES scholarships go above that amount. If it goes above that amount, they will give us up to $987,000 to keep it from taking other funds from us that we weren't prepared for them to take. So, but again, if it goes below, they'll only take the amount that they need to, but we don't get any of that $987,000.
When they first passed the FES or the overall scholarship, that was included in there as kind of a safety net, correct?
Yeah, it was included last year for the first time. They did, they started the FES, but you see at the rate it was growing, we were all raising cane, I'll be nice. And so last year, they, what was the first year that they did that supplement to help us, because none of us could, no district whatsoever could pinpoint a dollar amount. I kept estimating for the next year, but I would be so far off, it wouldn't even be funny, and so they decided last year to help us out some. And it, you know, it helps. There were some districts that used every bit of their discretionary amount, and they didn't allow us to keep it if we didn't need it, you know? It went back to the state, so.
Quick question. So charter schools required to have the same salary schedules or pay the minimum as we do?
They have to have the same minimum, yes, but yes.
Paraprofessionals, so they all make the state-based?
Yes, yeah, because I have to include, he'll have to include their reports in with ours when we submit them to the state. For the TSIA, we have to do the original plans that shows how we're using those funds and what each person is now at, and then in the past, it was a December report for your expenditures thus far, and then in August, you would have to do the year ended June, and I think they did away with the December report this year, but you still have to report it, and yes, I have to include the charter schools. I get them to do it and send it to me because they have their own salary schedules, you know?
So their boards determine their administrative salaries and that type of thing?
Yes, that's correct. We have no.
Except teachers and paraprofessionals or just teachers? They're not subjected to collective bargaining?
They're not, yeah, they do all of ours.
I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out, is it apples to apples with, you know, what we are required to do and then are doing?
They are required to have the 47.5 for beginning teachers, and I don't think they were required to implement the full $15 an hour, but I believe they did. When we were told, you know, the minimum wage for the state has went up a dollar an hour to get to 15, and we were told suddenly, "You're going to do the whole 15 this year," which was last year, the year before, one year sort of running into the other, but they decided to do it since we would because they wouldn't get people. You know, we were paying our paraprofessors $15 an hour, and they were only paying 12 where they were all going to come to us, so the charter schools did implement the $15 an hour minimum wage then too. But as far as their years of experience, rates of pay and things like that, I don't have a clue how much they're paying, you know?
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah. And so, let's see, next, I remember from that prior slide that I told you there was only $522,224 of flexible funding, but a lot of things are continuing to increase. This year was not a bad year for Florida retirement. Our retirement rates do play into the overall increased cost of salary and benefits and have been increasing regularly, as you can see by the chart, and I'm just showing regular class members in this chart. And we did, when we budget, we do budget by individual person because budgets are always so tight. Tara takes the allocations, and she puts people in and actually budgets their actual salary as they stand then, and, you know, if it's a vacant teacher slot, we'll take an average and put in there and everything, so there may be a little leeway there if she puts in what our average salary is, and they hire somebody brand new, we might save a little money there, or if they hire a long-term teacher, then we might lose a little, but it washes out. So our, right now, our general fund salaries are sitting around $56 million, $55,755 with instructional and classified, and so with the retirement increase, you're seeing we're only looking at about $33,000 because the rate only went up .06%. But last year, our salary and benefits for the general fund were at $52 million, and because we did give instructional salary increases, TSIA, and then we did give, added an extra lane for teachers and added extra lane for classified and gave 25 cents to a dollar an hour raise for some classified people, and we added the ESAR positions in. You'll see that our, the salary amount that benefits are based off of is, last year, $52 million, this year, $55.7. So that's where your increase of not just ESAR allocations that we added to the general fund, and we pretty much did that to keep from having an ESAR layoff like a lot of districts are experiencing, and it was a priority of the team. They wanted to keep these people, you know, and it was STEM people, it was reading intervention. I can't remember who all was in that group of people, but it was a priority of the team that we keep those, so I think y'all all approved some allocations that came through. I wasn't here at the time or anything, but that's the reasoning for the increase in salary dollars. As I mentioned, I use the regular.
Rhonda, so I keep reading or seeing when every budget and they talk about, you know, the Florida retirement system being severely underfunded. When do you think it's going to happen? They're going to come to all the participants in FRS and say, "Okay, you got to make a one-time payment of X based on your employees that are in the system to, you know, get us back to evenly funded."
I haven't.
They're encouraging people to go the 401K route versus FRS, but...
Yes, and they've watered down for new people entering the FRS, things that they can do. I haven't seen them in my time ever ask for a lump sum dollar amount, but there was discussion of it last year when they were talking about re-implementing the COLA that they had done away with to help save money. If they had done that, they would have had to reach out to districts to get them to provide a certain dollar amount to institute that COLA back to all their employees. Like me, and what the COLA was, the cost of living adjustment, for those that might not know, it was an automatic 3% increase in your Florida retirement every year. And when they decided to do away with that to save money in the FRS plan, they locked in people who were already in the plan, and I had at that point in time, I'll use me personally, I had got to a 1.6%. It's based on number of years. So when I do retire, I will be guaranteed, if I go with a pension plan, I will be guaranteed each year to get a 1.6% increase, whereas people that are already retired and had the 3% are going to get a 3%. New people coming in, I don't even know if there's a COLA anymore, that you can build up one, but...
So at your Finance Directors Conference, any discussion about FRS and, you know, what?
There was discussion along the lines of the COLA and how they were going to come up with the dollar amount. I think it will, and I think that'll be one of the main things in the Finance Council Budget Priority List that, you know, we're going to ask the state to fund that for districts, but whether it does or not. And to give you an estimate of what I would think it would count, they're going to have to come up with an actuarial study and try to come up, to make it fair, it would have to be, you know, by district, how many people you had, because we can't be compared to like a Miami Dade or something like that, but I don't think they, I think it's coming too. Anytime something comes up and they bat it down a year or two, it eventually comes back and it gets passed. But we do have a few people in other categories. I use the 13.63% retirement rate because that's where 90, I'm going to say 98, 98 or more percent of our people are. We do also have a senior management rate of 34%, 34.52, a special risk, 32.79. Elected officials are at 58.68. As you know, there's only six elected officials in the district. I think there's only, there's only one special risk, and there's six or seven senior management. And NEFAC has their own slots too, but we don't have to pay that, they have to pay that, so the biggest majority.
And let me just say for the record, it doesn't benefit us, at least four of us, because we've already have retired in the FRS system. Oh, five, I'm sorry, you know, Rick too, so.
Right, but we still have to pay it.
It is a cost to the district, which is...
I know that's one of the things you had looked into, you had reached out early on to us while we were paying retirement on you.
As long as we're a half-billion dollars unfunded, you're never going to happen, but...
Yeah, and it's another thing that I think is unfair. We pay retirement on employees, and if they don't stay eight years, they never get vested. That money doesn't come back to the district, it stays in the FRS. You know, we paid it for that employee, they leave it seven years, five months, they don't get a penny except the 3% they paid in themselves, but the district doesn't get that money back, but it's, you know, an FRS rule, so we have to pay it. I'm going to briefly look, I had done this for some other presentation, I updated it. This is a change in teacher pay over the last few years. As you all know, the Governor added additional money to the FEFP to get beginning teacher pay to the 47.5 and put rules around how much of that money had to be used for beginning teacher pay in the classroom and how much could be used for non-classroom teachers or veteran teachers. The very first year implemented, which I think is 2020-2021, there was almost an $8,000 jump for beginning teacher pay in our district, and the district and the union agreed that we didn't want to keep two separate instructional salary schedules because, again, this huge amount, 80% of the money had to go to beginning teacher pay until you got it up to 47.5. So it would be, we would have beginning teachers making more than classroom, non-classroom teachers, so we agreed in negotiations that we wanted one salary schedule, so the district put in additional money so that we would have the one salary schedule that classroom teachers and non-classroom teachers would have the same amount of pay, and we put in enough funds that first year to get veteran teachers a $1,200 raise.
So we did that for our general fund, correct?
From our general fund, yes. For the general fund teachers now, grants picked up, yeah, grants picked up theirs, and we continue to add additional funds over the base teacher salary increase allocation in the FEFP year after year. Once we hit the required minimum in '22-'23, we went ahead and we added additional funds to get to that minimum to, over the TSIA new money, to try to get the percentages to change, and it was also a few other little items in statute that, regarding performance pay and things along those lines, that if we went ahead and made 47.5, wouldn't apply to us. So we put extra money in to get there in that year, and the rules changed then from being 80% having to go to beginning teachers, it became 50-50. So 50% could be beginning teachers, 50% could be given to veteran and non-classroom teachers. Now, it's gone down to completely negotiate how those funds are used.
So the $200 million that was budgeted this year for, will be negotiated?
The union, yeah, we'll negotiate it, and we'll have to remember that any teacher salary increase, whether it's TSIA or district funds, has to be negotiated with the union, it has to be ratified by the union membership, and then it has to be board-approved by you all. That's the only way we can give out teacher increases or classified increases. We are subject to negotiation laws.
So the $200 million would be in addition to what we would normally do through our general fund increases or?
Yeah, but our share of the $200 million is nowhere close. The new funds for TSIA for 2024-25, they, again, it's up in the base student allocation, but they told you how much was for maintenance of raises you've already given, and they're only giving us enough maintenance dollars for the portion that was TSIA, and we're having to do the maintenance for the additional that we put in. But for Putnam, it was $639,775, and $35,203 of that goes to the charter schools, leaving us with $604,562 of new TSIA money for this new year for us to negotiate with the union, and that has to cover benefits too. So by the time you do FRS, Social Security, and Medicare, it leaves you with $498,485 for new TSIA salary increases. So that will definitely be negotiated and given out. You know, it's for a specific purpose, so we will certainly do that. But negotiations regarding salary for instructional and classifieds for '24-'25, I know that y'all met a couple of times, but I don't think you've gotten to salaries yet, have you? So I can't really speculate what the beginning teacher pay, the average teacher pay, and experienced teacher pay will be for '24-'25 because that process has not really even been started yet. I know we have encouraged to get the TSIA settled because the superintendent doesn't want to have to go to Tallahassee and say, "Well, we haven't gotten that money in teachers' pockets," but I'm not sure how that's going to stand with the union since I won't be on the team anymore, but that's supposed to be done by August 1st? Is that right? I think so. So I'm not sure how all that's going to work out. We've never met that deadline before, but the state is getting, because the union wants to negotiate the whole package. They don't want to negotiate and ratify just the TSIA and then come back and talk about other stuff, so that's where we've been year after year, and I know you and Rick did go down this year and talked before them.
No, I didn't. And I think you did say October 1st.
Is it October 1st? I couldn't remember the date.
Because I think it's the deadline to...
Yeah, okay, so hopefully they'll get it settled before then.
Do other districts do it separately? Do the TISA?
Some of them do, yes, sir.
I mean, isn't there an advantage to that?
I think there is.
I mean, for both, for us and them?
It gets the money in the teachers' hands, for sure.
So they're not willing to?
Well, I think they've had conversations, and I think, and again, I don't want to speak out of turn on that because I'm not in the session, but I think they've had some conversations about trying to meet that deadline.
That would be wonderful. We've tried for a few years now.
And I know as soon as the union found out we had to go stand before the State Board, they did an MOU, but I think, you know, they're trying to work with this and that, trying to get it done early.
And year before this year, the state accepted, because I, right before you were supposed to go, I sent them a signed MOU, our TA'd salary schedule that showed we had agreed on a dollar amount, and so they told you, you didn't have to come, but that didn't work for this year that we're currently in, they had to go down. Now, we've talked about we have declining enrollment and thus lower revenues. We have increased operational costs. There's a lot of factors that affect our operating budget. Property insurance is almost 55% higher than it was six years ago. Utilities are over 21% higher. I was surprised that gasoline and diesel... I was surprised that gasoline and diesel are about the same. I looked at expenditures versus what was budgeted this year and everything, so several years ago. And all that could be when they buy some and it goes into their inventory, that expenditure is still going to be up there. So that's stayed pretty stable. I know there's been quite a flux up and down of gas prices and everything, but looks like overall it's being pretty stable. And I mentioned subs and they have almost tripled since 2018, 2019. It's an increasing cost of doing business. And like everything else has increased from last year. Departmental budget increase, budget request also increased. Once we have the final run of payroll and bills on July 15th that post back to June 30, we'll see how much of a fund balance rollover we have that will help with some needs and wants. But unfortunately, departmental budgets are always the areas we have to go to first to try to reduce and balance our budget. Because schools earn their funds by FTE, charter schools by their FTE. We lose the FES funds to private schools and home schools. We have to pay utilities, we have to buy diesel to keep the buses running. We have to pay insurance and postage, salary and benefits, categoricals, add-on FTE to their appropriate programs. We have some district initiatives like drug prevention and that's the, uh, Michelle Garner, I can't think what her program is called, but uh. Yeah, juvenile crime prevention, the dual enrollment options, virtual instruction. We have to keep the 3% reserve. And we do other reserves for declining enrollment proration. Last year, I think our budgeted expenditures were 105% of recurring revenues. We had a generous fund balance to cover that. So we're always counting on that rollover to, to balance the budget. But unfortunately, departments always bear the brunt when it comes to the final act of balancing the budget. Unfortunately for neck, you know, when we had this public hearing, or the thing to add, the department's budget may look entirely different than, you know, from that. Because that'll be where we have to go in order to balance the budget if we don't have enough of a role to cover everybody's budget requests that they put on.
You know, considering the, the inflation, um, you know, situation we're in with the economy and it's been, you know, steamrolling and the interest rate cost and all that. You know, I can tell you that both as an employee of, in county government, that we were instructed, department heads, to submit a zero-based budget. And the same thing on the city commission, Dawn, remember, he just clarified it for me. You know, from 2010 to 2014, in that recession, and then, you know, with economic times, same thing, zero-based budget, you know. You know, I think that we need to, I mean, just me personally, that there's going to be things that we're going to be asked to pay for, that we aren't, you know, the ancillary costs for new school construction and a whole host of other things. I think we should be working from a zero-based budget. I mean, there's been increases in department budgets, what, for how, as long, what, for the last 10 years?
I'd have to go back and look, but yeah, they.
Last five years, okay, with a declining enrollment, if that makes sense.
I, I can't, well, like for our department, we're required to do a milliman actuarial adjustment. That, the cost of that goes up. You have to get an actuarial firm, firm, and you have to do, it's for FRS compliance in our audited financial statements. And it's gone up over the last few years from 16,000 to 24,000 this coming year. So I can only sort of speak for my department, but there's certain costs that are steadily increasing for us.
Absolutely, that you have no control over.
Right.
You know, when I'm talking about the ones you do have control over. And I'm just curious what the other board members think about it. And we're in a workshop, shop session and, you know, I'm just curious. I think that, you know, it's time we start with declining enrollment. And you know what really jogged my, my, or, you know, piqued my interest about this is Flagler County's been in declining enrollment for almost as long as we have. With, with their growth, being one of the probably 10 fastest growing counties in the nation, you know, but they're still declining enrollment, you know. I don't know if they're all going to private schools or people that are moving there don't have kids or what the deal is, but. And if you read your school board, you know, Wednesday email they sent out is that you look at all these schools, what, what was ironic to me is Pasco is going to keep open three schools with half or less of what the capacity for that school is. That they're, you know, because there's such community uproar about it. I mean, it's, you know, these are some really difficult times that we're facing financially. And I think it's going to get worse because of the voucher situation and because the legislature continues to ignore public schools and what we really need to be viable. And, um, and again, the 200 million for teacher salaries, when you look at what that is, and, and I agreed with the teachers' union on this one, very rarely do, but they said it was not enough and they were right. It wasn't enough. I mean, for us to be able to keep pace and not be in the bottom five, 50 school states that are in the bottom five as far as teacher salaries. And, you know, I'm a big advocate of teacher salary and principals and, you know, school staff. But, you know, we, we, we need to take a strong look at that, just my opinion. I don't know what y'all think about it, but I'd be curious to know.
Well, we do ask when, when departments are putting on their budgets that if there's a significant change over their prior year budget, they, they send an email saying what it is that they need that money for. And I think this year, those emails have been coming to you and we haven't got to that point yet. What I have right now is we closed out the, the budgets and I'm going to roll them over to the working budget. I like to leave what everybody put in so that you can always go back and see it. So we roll it to a new one and that's where we start making changes. So all I've seen thus far is the dollar amount request that was put in for items other than salary benefit and utilities, because, you know, the district covers all of that. So he's going to share those requests with me so I can see, you know, the different departments that put in more than the prior year and what they said they needed those funds for.
What, what's the, the process then? So they're required to send an email explaining why there's an increased request, but what is then the process?
Like? The, the process is if we don't have enough money to balance the budget, departments lose out. There's really nowhere else to take it from. You can't take it from the schools. And you can't, you know, you have to pay the charter schools and you have to do the FES and you have to pay utilities and stuff, so.
Is there a, but is there an, an analysis? So for example, if there, somebody's asking for an increase and we have the money, is there, is it just automatically approved or is anyone looking at it and deciding if that's viable?
It's pretty much, well, we, we don't even get that. Because we did adopt many, many years ago, site-based budgeting and everything, if there's money to cover it. You know, the whole budget is brought before the board and the board approves or says yes or no on the budget. You get three different opportunities to look at the budget. And I, you know, I'm aware that the first one is just like three little single-page documents. But when we come to that first public hearing, I run a big printout and we can email it if you want it. But Terry usually puts it in the board's room over there of everybody's budget and everything. So pretty much, you know, we have the money, we approve it. And if there's something that we don't have enough money, just like last year, Lennon's budget was cut tremendously and it was just, you know, we would, we tried to do everything that he wanted done, but there was no way to. He had a lot of needs last year and I reached out to him and, you know, we.
And personnel is, is the biggest?
Yeah, and but they don't, they don't put on their personnel. So yeah, salary and benefits for the general fund is, you know, 82. something percent, yeah. So, you know, when you, when you take that and then you've got all your utilities, your insurance and charter school payments and things like that, there's not a whole lot of budget left. There's truly not.
I have two things. So when, is there a way that we can get the, the slides bigger? So I can see it, okay.
I'll, I'll share the, I, I sent the, the whole presentation to Mike and he put it on his computer here. I can send you that whole thing. I can send it as a PowerPoint, I can send it as a PDF. Because I did myself a PDF and it printed out much larger, but yeah.
Um, and so on the previous slide, I think it, I think that says media.
Yeah, instructional media.
We were asking the same thing.
And that, um, that's the increase. Is that because of like our sore classrooms and our?
Can you respond to that? Because he sent, he sent, um, yeah, he, he, and Thomas already knows and Thomas is going to talk to him. He requested over $5 million this year. He felt like they needed 3% of the budget and he had the budget as being 177 million. Our budget is nowhere, our general fund budget is nowhere close. And once you take out, you know, his salary and benefits and everything like that, 3% unreserved fund balance is only like $2.5 million. So he was, um, he will understand when we have to cut him. Last year, we cut quite a bit and we did try to move capital needs over to capital funds in departments. So we had cut if it was capital items, we took it out of the general fund and we put it over into the capital funds because, um.
And, and if you, Mr. Mary brought it up, but if you think back when the superintendent first brought to our attention the closing of schools because we had some schools operating with less than, well, about 200 students. And, and it was not cost-effective to, to run those schools. And so you, it's, the decline in enrollment is what, you know, triggered this. But you sometimes have to bite the bullet and do what you have to.
And there's a lot of that going on right now. I've seen articles on several school districts doing that. Because there is an economy of scale, you're still going to have the same overhead in a small neighborhood school that you're going to have, you know, that you might have 200 students here and have 900 students over here. The overhead's going to be the same. There'll be different costs based on the number of students, but your overhead is pretty much there. And that's why everybody has pulled away. I understand everybody wants neighborhood schools. And it would be wonderful to be able to do that whether it was 200, 300. But if you don't get the funding in order to be able to do that, that's, that's where it hurts big time.
And then this, this with the homeschool, I know we, the plan that you and, and Mrs. Piazza, Mrs. Woods presented about the, the proposed homeschool that will, but now even giving money to those parents that homeschool for the ones that are doing it right, yeah, we applaud them. But how many are not in, in these?
Yeah, I couldn't really speak to when you get a kid back, you know, how far below they might have fallen. But one thing, Jonathan, Jonathan Hinky reached out to us and we had had prior talks with Mary Piazza about becoming a vendor for Step Up. Becoming a vendor and getting some of those funds back. If one student wants to take just a band class from us, you know, can we charge them? In my Finance Council meeting at FSFAW last week, it was a big topic of conversation. Some schools, some districts were already doing it, but they were hitting a brick wall with parents not wanting to pay it. What do you mean, you're a public school, we shouldn't have to pay you for my child to attend a band class? And you have to explain to them, well, look, we don't get funds for your kid anymore.
Right.
Your kid is now a private or a homeschool and all the funds followed that kid. So if you want services from us, you're going to have to pay us, just like you would pay Step Up or someone else for providing services. So Jonathan reached out and they wanted permission to, you know, get with some of our staff and discuss these things and see if we couldn't become a vendor and get some of those funds back. So I know a lot of districts are going to be doing that and I don't know what it's going to look like or anything like that. We hadn't got that far, right? I know when, I think it was back in April, that I answered Mary's and questioned and I sent her some paperwork off of the Step Up website. It said you could become a vendor, a public school district could become a vendor. There's nothing that said you had to, there's nothing that says how much you can charge, if you charge. But you could become a vendor and they could either, Step Up could either, if things got done soon enough, Step Up could pay you and give the rest of the money to the parent or the private school. Or you could become a vendor, but individually charge those schools or those parents for the services. So it's probably a lot to be looked at and worked out and everything, but it is on our radar and, um.
One of the things that, that, you know, you look at it from both a statistical and demographic standpoint and then you try to calculate, you know, age of schools and construction. The changing, and, and not just for us, but, I mean, I read it's, it's school districts all over the state. And in some, like Duvall County, you know, it's closing 30 schools, even though they're one of the largest five. You're right, the neighborhood school and especially in rural counties is almost impossible. And in those larger districts, it's now going to become even harder for them to do. But the money, you know, that we, you know, excluding the bond that we would normally have for construction, you know, isn't, the legislature hadn't funded it enough for us to, to make those changes as the demographics, statistics change with student population. And so, you know, we're forced into a situation like now where, you know, we're going to, we're going to have, you know, costs that we normally wouldn't have.
Yes, sir.
Because of that. And, you know, trying to work through that transition, there's going to be people who aren't, aren't happy about it. But when it comes to economies of scale, it's either, okay, well, we can do it the way we're doing it or we can increase the millage rate. Nobody wants to do that, you know, including me. And so, but it is a, it is a complicated, but if you look at it, it goes back to state funding.
It does.
That's.
I think that's, that's one reason I wanted Rhonda to spout her background and her leadership in school finance education in the state of Florida. We've, we've done a really good job over the years with what we've got. That doesn't mean we can't do better, but there's, oftentimes there's auditors in our building from the state auditing everything we do, that's not uncommon. I feel like we're on track and we're, we're doing the best we can. There's going to be more homeschooling. Education is the whipping child of, of America right now. Everybody's going to complain about what goes on in education. But the bottom line is you've got to do the best you can to serve each and every child that is out there. And we've got to find a way to bring those in. I don't know what the state's going to do when they try to track people getting vouchers that aren't even educating their kids at home, but it's, it's going to be a nightmare some, at some point. But I, I've been through this enough that I, I feel confident with, with Ms. Odom and, and what she's presenting us. Doesn't mean we can't find ways to do better, but when you're tied to collective bargaining and then you get the state of Florida that'll send you money and then tell you to freeze it after you get it and then they take it back at some point. It's, it's a, it's, nothing is as it seems when you get it from the state.
And just, just asking how they push the lottery and, and all these, and, and you laugh because we know, we know what the deal was. And they are making all of this money and schools were given this, but this was cut, you know, so it doesn't.
We used to receive enough money to fund all the guidance and media specialists and deans at every school. And now the only thing that they tout, that they send directly to us is school recognition funds that come from the lottery. Now, I don't know if anybody else can speak to any other funds that we receive, but nothing that comes to me has the name lottery attached to it, except school recognition.
It's a shell game.
They got what they wanted, it was passed.
I, I know they, they do like bright future scholarships and things like that.
They keep increasing what students must score.
Yeah, in order to get it, yeah.
Pay out as less.
I get it, yeah. So, yeah, that's one, another one of those shell games or whatever you want to call it. Well, moving on, I wanted to give you a brief look at the way we do on collecting our property taxes every year. We're required to set our budget at 96%. You can only budget 96% collection rate of the rate based on millage and the county's property-based value. Historically, when we have the tax certificate sale, we collect at least 100% of that 96% except with that one exception in 2015, 2016, where we were down over $200,000. It'd be awesome if we could collect 100% of the total amount possible. But historically, that doesn't happen. It usually ranges 96 to 97% of the total amount possible. You'll see in the current year that we're in, we're down right now. But we have not yet had the, received the proceeds from the tax certificate sale. I'm not even sure if it's occurred yet. Usually it occurs the end of May, but.
I actually, for a client was working on a tax project. They're going to do two sales through the end of the year, every month, that they have, they've got so many and that, but they feel confident they'll, they'll sell.
Yeah, only the ones that they date through the end of June will help me with that dollar amount. But we still have not received distribution number 12 and they say it will be forthcoming. So hopefully it'll be enough to cover that, that dollar amount and everything. And if, if all the property doesn't sell at a tax, I mean, the taxes don't sell at a tax certificate sale, that money just stays, that property stays on the books of the property appraiser's office. And if. appraiser's office and if someone eventually comes in and pays their property taxes or if it's sold next year at a tax certificate sale, then the district would get their share and everything. But, uh, again, historically, once they have that sale, we, we at least collect what we budgeted to collect. So, we're looking for another 824,000 in the general fund there. Hopefully it'll come. Um, moving forward, I wanna talk about property tax values. Uh, the property tax value for '24, '25 is the amount that was approved in the legislative conference and that is on the first calculation, FEFP. That's $8,140,556,066. That shows overall property values went up over $657 million for this year, an 8.79% increase. Prior year, you'll see, was 21% increase, uh, in property values and before that's 18% uh, increase. I'm gonna say it again, the district has absolutely no control whatsoever over the property, uh, property tax values. We do not set that and have no hand in it. We have received, uh, the June 1 estimation of property values from the property appraiser's office and it was actually $8,556,476,497. That's an addition of $415,920,000 and some change, which, uh, that will be incorporated because they always use the property appraiser's value. Um, so that would mean actually this year's values will go up once they incorporate it, 14.35% over last year's values. Uh, they'll eventually incorporate it into the FEFP documents after they certify on July 1 because the state certifies the local rates on July 1 and so then we'll see a change in our millage then. Um, remember that the district does not benefit overall in the general fund from increased property values. If our local millage brings in more dollars based on higher values, they reduce our state dollars, the state FEFP dollars. They wanna be sure that every student is funded at a certain, uh, set amount, so increased property values helps the state, not the district. They reduce their state funds to us. The district still gets funded at the same level, it's just a higher, you know, they'll reduce the state percentage and increase the local percentage, 'cause, so I think that's a point that a, a lot of people don't know or haven't heard before. If property values go up, the school district might be getting more local money, but they're getting less state money. They're still getting the same budget that they were going to get based on their number of students, it's just changing the percentage of where the dollars are coming from. And note that in the 15 years of this chart, I've got charts with all kinds of different number of years and, um, property values in Putnam County have increased by $4 billion in 15 years.
Well, that's what I was trying to say. It's like a shell game. It's, you know, you're going up over here, but the state's keeping it over there and, you know, it doesn't really, it doesn't really come to us. I mean, I've done this long enough to...
Yeah.
Understand it.
All right, so now we're gonna look at our millage rates. Um, our entire millage rate is made up of the required local effort that's set by the state, uh, the discretionary that the district can decide whether to use it for operations or for capital outlay and as a district, we've always used it for operations, but that amount is also set by the legislature. Uh, and then the capital amount that, uh, is levied by the board, but the max was changed from 2.0 mils to 1.75 and has been stable at 1.5 mils for many, many years. And then debt that is levied by the board for voted debt issuance. Uh, the required local effort has been steadily decreasing since 2012, 2013 from a high then of 5.272 to now 3.133. Even add, adding in our debt levy this year at 0.797 mils, our entire total millage is still lower than the years from 2007 through 2018 and it's lower than last year's millage rate by 0.052 mils. If that rate stands, uh, for the person with a taxable value of a home of $100,000, they would see a school district reduction of taxes of $5.20, but that's if their home value stayed the same. If the property tax value is updated with the new numbers from the property appraiser's office, we will see the state lower the required local effort, so that'll lower our overall, um, millage. But our debt millage would also go down from 0.797 to 0.759 and that's pretty much a, a guarantee there, so that would be, um, a total reduction in millage from the debt side of 0.38, uh, 0.038. So, the total millage, 6.14 mils this year versus 6.230 mils last year and would be even more reduction once the state kicks in and lowers the required local effort, but we don't know that number yet. We'll probably get that about mid-July and we get that after we've already worked really hard to balance the budget and then the numbers are gonna change, but we'll get there.
Madam Chairman, Rhonda, you know, um, I think you were part of this discussion over a year ago when we talked about impact fees and, um, you know, why the county commission, you know, didn't support them, I had no idea. Um, I think it's a huge mistake. I think we should have been doing them five, six, seven years ago, um, and, you know, we're gonna find ourselves, uh, in a position where there's more burden put on the existing taxpayers and we're gonna have all this growth supposedly.
Right.
Um, and, and we're gonna be sitting here holding the bag and, and, uh, I can't remember, uh, Rick, if, if Charlie or one of his people said that we can't do one unless the county does one or we have to have the county commission's approval or something. Now we got a new attorney, maybe we can get a different opinion.
I've heard about it, so I'm happy to look at, at it for you, but I...
I know the county's doing a study.
Yeah, yeah. And we're gonna, yeah, and we'd have to do one too, so, um...
Yeah, 'cause Mr. Hales reached out to us about a study that they were looking at doing and everything and he couldn't say whether he felt like the county commission would have support for getting it passed even after the study and the study was gonna cost, uh...
A prior county commission did that years ago and they all got tossed out of office. Uh, you know, they tried to pass or do an impact fee that would, it would not impact or not be applied to people if they had property and they wanted one of their children to live on the property. That, that wasn't fair, so that, you know, that's something to look at in the future, but I'm, you know, until we're to that point...
We're at that point. I, I believe we're at that point. I, and, and, and the reason it got defeated, or those people, uh, they voted for it, then they decided to put it in a bay and it turned it from 2010, maybe to 2014 through that recessionary period, 2008, um, you know, that was fine because we had little or no growth. Um, but the mobile home industry is one that, that, you know, continued to stop that, but you look at St. John's County, Clay County, not only do they have impact fees for schools and roads and, you know, all the services, um, if they didn't have them, they'd be capped at their 10 mil, uh, maximum for schools and for their, for the county commissions and, and, you know, uh, unfortunately, um, you know, the people that are here are the ones that take the brunt of that and I, I, you know, I, I think that, uh, I don't think the study the county commission's doing included schools, I, I think we need to do a study. I mean, you're talking about 35 or $40,000 to, to have that done, uh, but, you know, um, most of this avalon increase we see is Seminole, the new power generating plant, the, the, the changes at, at, uh, the THAR, which, which is now Cinti and GP. Um, but if we'd just had impact fees for those increases and what they would have caused, I mean, we'd be in a whole different situation. Um, uh, and it would put us in a better position, uh, to fund future construction or remodeling or, or whatever we needed to make the transitions that we're gonna have to make based on our, our demand, our student enrollment. So, um, again, I'd, I'd be interested, what the other board members, you know, already here, Earl David, but...
I'm not in favor of it and I'll tell you, 'cause when he saw it happen years ago with the county commission, it didn't really help the schools that much and it was a problem. Uh, people hated it. I, I just, I think we're, we're, we're chugging along, we're going in the right direction right now. That's my feeling, Phil. I, at some point, that's something that a board, this board or a future board can, I mean, you can override me for sure, but I'm just not, I'm not ready for that right now, but, I mean, everybody else may be, I don't know.
So, 700 new, potentially new homes in East Palaca, um, that will all be paying, those of us that have, are here and been here, paying for the impact of, their impact, not just on the school system, but other services too. Um, and I think that's gonna lead to more. If you, you can't wait until you're already, they're starting construction to, to do a study to determine, you know, what the need is, number one, and then what the cost would be, uh, based on the type of construction, uh, to be done. Um, but when every county around us is growing and, and I keep hearing everybody saying that, you know, we're gonna have all this growth, you know, I'm a planner and I understand demographics and maybe you're right and, you know, certainly if the one in East Palaca gets approved, that, you know, we're, we're in the game. Uh, but I think that, you know, us sitting here and saying, oh, well, it didn't, didn't work and, you know, I, I just think that we should do our due diligence in determining whether or not it's prudent for us to look at doing one and moving forward and, and trying to get the information, the economic analysis that we need to make that determination. That's just my opinion, I don't know.
They, they, they say it's coming. I mean, but until I know for sure, you know, the, the, I think we could calculate, pretty much Rhonda could, the impact that other districts do with impact fees if, if that was a case or a sales tax or something at some point, but we just passed a bond issue. I'm, I'm just, you know, this, these homes are not approved yet and they might be...
July 9.
Coming and, and I've, I've heard that the whole corridor all the way to St. John's County has been...
Already been...
Already been set up to take in homes and we're gonna be a bedroom community of St. John's County, but, I mean, I think we need to keep that in our, you know, in the forefront, but at the same time, I think we need to concentrate on getting this budget passed today and moving ahead with this school year and knowing what we're gonna have in the future as we're trying to build these schools that we're into right now, we got a lot on our plate. I, I just, I don't know, I, I don't wanna sound overly negative to you because you've, you've been in planning a lot more than I have, but I have been through impact fees and when they were ended before and, and the problem they had and then the county came and wanted to do a, a sales tax and, and, you know, the Better Place Plan and we got involved in that. And I, I just think that right now, we need to just sit on where we are and observe and, and let's move forward very methodically and not just rush into appropriating money to, to research impact.
And out of curiosity, why weren't the schools included with the, with the county?
You have to ask whoever was on the board.
Oh, no, I thought you had that information.
No, I mean, it was, I don't know, it was even super, I'm not even, I mean, that was, what, 20 years ago?
Okay.
Um, so, even, it takes time. So, to do a study to determine is, is a pretty simple thing. Um, and then even if we decided, um, sometime before the end of the year that we wanted to move forward with doing the research and doing the, the economic analysis that's required by statute to do, um, that would, that's gonna take several months. Then, if that passes and we decide, oh, yeah, there's gonna be a huge impact and we're gonna, you know, this development out here gets approved and then we start seeing the dominoes start to fall because, I mean, the corridor's open. All they have to do is come in rezoning, they don't have to do any comp plan amendment. Everything on both sides of 207 to the county line is already designated as an urban service area, which means they can do any kind of commercial and residential development within means.
And so, the board then hires a firm or someone to...
Correct, right.
To do the study and they send out surveys, et cetera?
They do all their...
And all the legwork, et cetera.
It's not, you're not rewriting the book though. I mean, it's, there's enough of them done that, that can come in and do that in just a fairly rapid amount of time, given what's coming on. And I, I gotta tell you, we were involved in East Palaca Water and Sewage over the years. Uh, they used our numbers to, to help justify state funding on that and then we come to find out that they've developed a corridor all the way and nobody, nobody told us. I mean, I've watched that meeting on, on, on the YouTube channel and I was very, I was very surprised to say the least. I know, I know things are coming and changing, but, uh, you know, everybody says the schools didn't involve people in, in certain things as we approached our projects that, that we've got to carry out, but, you know, we didn't get heads up on that, so...
Well, we should have somebody on staff that's either from, or consulting standpoint, that's working directly with the county, that communicates with them, that, that's, you know, participates. I mean, even the, uh, naval air stations have somebody sitting as a, um, ad hoc member on the planning board for the county, just to make sure that they don't do anything that's gonna affect their bombing ranges down there. Um, we should have somebody that's doing that same thing that, you know, can follow because there are other impacts, there are other impacts too, uh, that happened and that, you know, four years ago, and honestly, I knew that they did a portion and I didn't realize they did the whole thing, but they administratively changed during the comp plan process where you can go through a, a, a valuation appraisal report and change your comp plan. It was every five years, I think it's every seven years now. They designated that whole area urban service, which is absurd. I mean, all the way to the county line. Um, and ironically, all that's farmland that's cleared, um, the, the amount of money it takes is about $5,000 an acre to clear a timbered site versus farmland. You just go in there and start doing your work and it's, it costs $5,000 an acre to cost your cost. All I'm saying is that, that I think that we owe it to the taxpayers now to at least do an, an evaluation of what, where we are from an impact fee standpoint and is it prudent? So, in the county, you know, I mean, we could wait for theirs to come back, but it's apples and oranges what services they provide, what, versus what we provide. But even if you did that, it would take at least a year and a half, a year to a year and a half, maybe two years to get an impact fee ordinance put in place where we can start, you know, collecting, the tax collector could, could collect, or the building department could collect those on new construction. Um, so, you know, and I'm, I'm personally, you know, not a, a real, I, I understand it's a controversial thing, but again, when you're creating the demand for additional services, you ought to pay for them, you know, um, not the people that have been here that have been paying taxes and, and to me, that's a, that's a valid point and something I think we consider. I'm not saying we have to do it today, but, you know, we sort of need to look at it.
Right, I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Buckles did mention that, that it is something that we could possibly look at. It makes sense, you know, when you hear it both, but right now, um, I, I'm, I certainly wanna hear more about it.
Phil's, Phil's...
So, we can certainly do this at a, at another meeting.
Phil is absolutely correct on that, but...
I, I agree.
I wanna hear from the superintendent at some point on, on his ideas on millage and, and, and impact fees and things like that because his roles are different than our roles, so we'll hear that at some point, but it, it really, it is not reinventing the wheel. I mean, if you wanna do an impact fee study, you can do an impact fee study. It's quick, but it, it may take a, a year to gather data, but they haven't broken ground over there and it's not totally finalized yet, so we'll see what happens.
You said July 9?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Again, if y'all, you know, at the, the next board meeting, if you wanna have a conversation about it and then, um, you know?
Yes, sir.
Whatever, uh, whatever next steps, if any, that you wanna take, we can discuss.
What, what do you think? I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
Well, I just think, uh, you know, right now, we, we were asked, I think Rhonda mentioned, we were contacted by the county about, you know, getting involved with that and we, we declined. We had not budgeted the money to be involved with that, so we just said at this time, we're, we were not interested in doing that. But, uh, right now, I just wanna have, uh, maybe a discussion with y'all after you have a chance to maybe talk to your constituents or, um, maybe do some, some more reflection and study on that and, um, discuss it at a board meeting and then, you know, I can offer my...
Does, does the superintendent association or the school boards association have somebody that works with districts on impact fees?
I'm not aware of that.
They're, 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 Phil, there's firms all over the state of Florida.
I understand that, no, I've dealt with them when I, in the legislature, they have them.
Your buddy would be able to give us a quicker answer. Do Chris do?
Oh, Chris.
Yeah. I mean, that could let us know if there is somebody in the association that does that.
Well, just from this, you know, general, you know, as the superintendent's saying that, you know, to allow for a discussion just so that you can understand, but, but the impact fees don't impact anybody that's already here, that's, you know, living here. It's new development, all new development. It's new development, all new development. And so, you know, I don't know. I can assure you that if we went and asked D.R. Horton, "Oh, would you mind paying an impact fee for these 700 homes you're going to put in?" And the kids are going to, they're going to say, "No, but I pay $7,000 a year for every new home in St. John's County and $5,000 and something in Clay County."
And I'm sure that's probably what is driving the desire to come to Putnam County is that they're not that, those fees.
Well, and the land's so much cheaper.
Right, right. Exactly. So, yeah, there's a lot more of that, a lot more questions than answers now, but.
And again, it is open budget discussion on the road, most certainly. So it's not closed.
I'd be happy to contact some people and rather maybe than do it in a board meeting, if we could maybe have, you know, down the road after October, because we'd have to budget for it if we did a study. But maybe we can get somebody to come in and talk to us about what that entails and, you know, timeframes and that type of thing.
As an informational
As an informational type thing and not the type of board meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Buckles.
I think Rhonda, you still had a couple.
Yeah, just a couple more slides. I was going to give you a brief update on the bonds. As you all know, we sold our first trench of bonds in June of 2023. We sold 99,995,000 of bonds at a premium. And after deducting all the expenses, we netted 104,40,731.90. We have earned interest on those invested funds. We've got them invested in our Florida FID account with Deep Blue Investments. We're earning around 5.5% interest on that. So since July of 2023, we've earned 4,472,000. And we expect to add about 900 more of interest, 900,000 more of interest to that for the month of May and June. All of this interest income goes into the bond fund to use for allowable bond cost. We had expenses related to the bond acquisition and expenses related to school construction and the real estate purchase. We've spent around $9.1 million and have 9.3 million more encumbered. So we currently have an unencumbered balance of funds available as of May 31st of 90,120,459.55. You'll see on there that the tax collector has withheld 121,000 of commissions on collecting this bond millage. And if we collect at the 96% collection rate, they will withhold another 3,700. So that'd be roughly 125,000 that they take from our budgeted collection of the 6,228,160 that we need to pay the principal and interest of the bond. So we'll be short that amount. But it's an allowable expense from the bond fund, so we'll use the bond funds to make up the amount so that we can pay the principal and interest that's due on July 4th, that dates July 3rd. That's dated back to June 30th. We have to make the payment on it. And it is an allowable expense from bond funds. As you all know, we weren't aware that they were going to be collecting a commission and everything. So we didn't do enough millage at that time to collect for that additional cost and everything. But just wanted to give you a brief update about the bonds and then I'm
Rhonda, there, just a little side note, and I think you've mentioned this before, but the tax collector did provide an adjustment, a refund, if you will, when they recalculated that.
Yes. They certainly did. They were withholding way more and they were holding a flat 3%. And we had a few little back and forths at a bond oversight committee. And when I finally got her attention, she went and looked and they were withholding a flat 3% and they refunded us, I think it was about $50,000. So that amount on that prior side is the amount after the refund. And they were supposed to withhold 3% on the first 50 million of assessed value. And then after that, it goes down to 2%. So when this initially came up, they had estimated that it would probably be 110,000 a year and I had estimated 125,000. And it's coming in, it's going to be 124,900. So pretty much spot on on that. But I was just doing the math from what the statute said that they could do, not that they had to do it, but what they could do. So I knew there was something wrong when they were charging us more than that and everything. But we did get that money back, so that's good. Okay, so a quick update on special facilities. When we were awarded the special facilities fund last year, they decided to fund it over a two-year period instead of the normal three-year period that they had been doing in the past. So we received the year one funding in 2023, '24 in the amount of 35,282,472. And this fund does not earn interest because it's a PICO type of fund that you request the funds after you spend them. So you have to go in, they're budgeted funds, but they're not realized. You have to, you spend it, you go in and do a drawdown. And so it's sort of like cash advance funds with all of our federal grants.
Rhonda, tell them what PICO stands for, so if somebody's watching.
Public Education Capital Outlay. And in the past, many, many, many years, we would receive PICO, new construction, PICO, special maintenance, and we would get several million dollars a year. And eventually it kept dwindling down. First, they did away with new construction. And then on the special maintenance portion, now only the charter schools get it. We do not get it. And now we are having to share our 1.5 mil with charter schools, but they subtract. The state decides how much of the 1.5 mils the charter schools are going to get based on their capital outlay FTE. And then they subtract out how much they get from PICO, because we do not get PICO. And then whatever the balance, last year, we would, or the year we're in now, we would have had to, they were going to let us implement it slowly. So 20% of that we were going to have to give. But because we were awarded special facility funds, that's one of the things that can come off the top. So we do not have to share our 1.5 mils at the current time with charter schools. And this coming budget year, other school districts will have to give 40% of what the dollar amount would be after they subtract out the charter schools' capital PICO money. And then it's going to go up to 60 and then 80 till it finally gets up to, we're going to give them 100% of their 1.5 mils as we move forward and everything. Once we meet our participation match for this special facilities funds, then we'll go into having to share the 1.5 mil with the charter schools. Right now, because of special facilities, we do not have to. We were approved just recently in the legislative session for year two of our special facility funds. And they also completely funded the increased cost that we had asked for, that Rick and Thomas had gone down and talked to them about. So in year two, we're getting 59,785,687 for a total project award amount of 95,68,159. Currently, we have spent 3,91,432.24 and we've got 26,000 encumbered. So we've got an unencumbered balance of funds available for this new year of 91,953.70. And every bit of that money, of course, goes toward Crescent City Junior/Senior High School.
Rhonda, that additional amount is included in that 59, but I think it's around 27 million.
I believe it was. It would be that same, 59 minus 30, I think the second year was supposed to be the same amount as the first, but I pulled the reports to look and see how much the second year was. So it is 95 million.
That was really pretty crucial, because if we had not gone out after that this year, we would have had to go back the third year, which may or may not have happened. And the construction of that school could have been interrupted. And, you know,
That's true.
Some other districts have had to face that recently. So we were very proactive in going after that. And some other districts also did the same thing.
And luckily, it didn't end up on that veto list, so they fully funded it and that was wonderful. So really, I know I mainly hit on the general fund today, but it's operational, it's the main fund of the district. We spoke briefly of debt, that we use it to pay back the general obligation bonds. And we're only allowed to collect the amount of taxes that we need each year to service that debt. The debt payment stays the same, but with the property values going up, the millage amount, you know, will go down. Or as more growth, more homes are built or businesses are built, it'll be shared among more people. We have to carry over all the old carryover projects in the same category as before. For capital, we have the new 1.5 mil capital outlay budget. And we currently plan to budget the biggest portion of that 12.3 million that it should bring in this year for our special facilities participation match as we go through the general fund and with all of our increased costs. And only a small amount of that flexible revenue that we talked about from state and local. If our fund balance role is not enough to cover all the additional staff and increased operating costs, scholarships and everything, we may reserve a portion of that capital, which you're allowed to do by statute to partially or fully fund the maintenance or insurance. We may have capital needs in the district like budgets. So we'll look at that as we come to it. We spoke briefly about the bonds and the status. We currently have not made any plans and haven't even really discussed any plans on the remaining 200, $200 million and $5,000 of our bonding capacity that's out there. We'll have the whole two years of special facility revenue to budget in. And like I said, everything will be budgeted to Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. School food service puts in, gives us their revenue that we have to put in and they put in their regular budget. So on that, we, you know, we figure their carryover fund balance and we balance their budget after their revenue plus fund balance minus expenditures is what we balance to for their expected new year fund balance. We put in all the carryover federal projects grants. There's a lot of them. We've got 420 funds, we've got 430 funds, 440, 490. There's a lot of funds and a lot of projects. So we have to put all those carryovers in now. No award letters for new year Title I funds or IDEA funds are ever here at the time of budgeting. So they'll be put in as a budget revision when we do get those numbers. So we have to put in the group insurance. That's another of our funding sources. We put in all of Nefex revenue budgets. They put in their expenditure side and we budget it and do their fund balance reserves at the meeting to advertise the budget, which we have scheduled for July 24th. And Susan, I think she left on there same time it was last year at 11:30 a.m., but we are open to any time. You may have talked to her already.
Maybe later in the day, we can
Yeah. Oh, y'all talked about that. Okay. Yeah, any time is perfectly fine. That's the one that does not have to be after 5 o'clock. The other two hearings on the budget have to be after 5. But at that meeting, we'll give a brief update on the new year budget, percentages of recurring revenue being spent, how much our actual fund balance role was, once we know it, what our projected fund balance for June 30th, 2025 is going to be. And we'll go over the three pages that are required to be put in the newspaper. Now, I will say that legislation this year, sorry, I've got a cramp, did allow a district could choose by school district vote to no longer advertise in the paper. It's a costly expense and everything. And that you could advertise on your, you could publish your, all your documents and publish your intent to have it all instead of the newspaper on the budget by you all having a special meeting and making that decision to do it. And you had to put a notice in the paper that you were going to intend to do it that way. But we just got the instructions on this last week with the Department of Revenue. They came to FSFAO and provided all of that. You have to make sure that your website is ADA compliant, that it can be read to you. You have to be sure that your people in the county have accessible internet so that they can have good access to our website. And like I said, Trim just gave us the rules last week, so I think it would be pretty hard to get all this figured out and done for this year. I was sort of hoping to. I thought it sounded a little bit exciting, you know, to put it on our website. But I'll leave that for you all in future years if you decide to do it. Unless you instruct me to go ahead and try to figure it out and get it done for this year instead of putting ads in the paper. But it's just the three pages. I'm, you know, I'm still going to have to do those pages and have to get them put on the website or take them to the paper and put them in the paper. So I've got no preference one way or another. So I'll do whatever the board so desires. And pretty much that's all I have for you today. I'll be here on July 24th for the meeting for permission to advertise the balanced budget. And other than that, if anybody has any questions for me or for Jonathan or Rhonda.
I think it's kind of interesting, just to reiterate what you said at the very beginning. Y'all are seeing, I think last year, we had a budget workshop latter part of July.
It's July 24th.
Now we're having it latter part of June. So I think you're seeing the budget at a much different stage.
Yeah, it's messy right now.
Right, it's messy, yeah. So it'll be cleaned up this time next month.
Yeah, this is the time of the year that everybody's rushing to get everything done. We can't really estimate things. We have to do all the regular accounting jargon with the accounts payable, accounts receivable and all that. So until we get past that July 15th date, and I even ask if they were going to pay early, because July 15th is a Monday this year. So I'm like, because I'd like to work the weekend before. And are you going to get the payroll done or the bills paid on that Thursday before? And they have it all set for Monday, July 15th. So that'll be when we can, after that post, I know it'll post a day or two before that. But after that happens, we'll know what the fund balance role is and everything. And then we can really gear in and get a lot more done.
Okay. We have some comments
So I brought this up last year and it was obviously too late, but my first budget. You know, we just heard earlier in the workshop Jonathan and Rhonda talk about the cost for us, you know, our indirect costs for grants and how expensive that is. You know, last year, you know, I objected to the minimum amount that Nefex was paying us to do their personnel, HR, finance, purchasing and everything under the sun. And, you know, got some pushback. I'm not against Nefex. I think it's great they're here. I think they do a good job as far as what I've seen. But their budget's $19.6 million. They got 82 full-time staff members. They have grants of $1.8 million that we're required to administer. It is a just very big operation. And just if we went with the 5% that Jonathan's saying they get from both grants or this is the cap, based on their budget, they'd be, you know, they'd be paying us almost a million dollars a year. I think they pay us 150,000?
125,000.
125.
Their budget's way bigger than, I think I heard you say 19 million?
I thought it was 19 million. Did I get that wrong?
No, they've got enterprise funds and internal service funds, so 50 million.
Okay, yeah. I didn't even include, I was going to bring that up. That's kind of, that's part of their, you know, I think that's 40 million. So if you look at all this together, about $70 million that we're responsible for, 82 employees, all the HR stuff that goes with that. You know, we're putting about 800,000, 900,000 in indirect cost on our taxpayers that they should be paying. And, you know, honestly, you know, I'd love to go out there and with Jonathan or Rhonda or both or in the superintendent, I think this is unacceptable. And, you know, I think that, I'm not saying that they should be paying a million dollars. You know, that might be a little much, but $125,000 is ridiculous for the amount of work that we're doing. And, you know, none of the other school districts participate in our, you know, we've been doing it, I think, since their inception. And, you know, either it's time for somebody else to take their turn or for them to pay us what is actually costing us and our taxpayers to do all these services and basically, you know, be the agent or the administration for them on personnel financing, purchasing and everything else that's done, that has to come through us. And again, I
Before you move off that, it was some, I don't remember who, but didn't you mention some perks? Something other than the 125,000 that we receive when we take care of all of this for them? There, I didn't talk with someone about any perks, Mr. Superintendent?
I don't think so.
Nothing else other than the 125?
What I remember is having gone through this before with a prior board and prior board member who wanted to take on the Northeast Florida Consortium. Of course, I chaired the board out there for 12 years, so I understand what they do in the state of Florida and how they are the backbone of rural Florida with the Panhandle area and the Heartland Consortium and what they do bring to Putnam County. It'd be like telling water management, "We don't want y'all here anymore. Why don't y'all get out of town and, you know, take your jobs with you?" You know, you've got people out there that live here in Putnam County that work out there. These people come there and they spend their money here in Putnam County. I don't disagree that we shouldn't always be looking for a better way to, you know, find savings. But we get a lot of, I would like, you know, I can remember Jeb Bush, Governor Bush. We had regular meetings in the Nefex group. We were called the Little Dogs. And we would go, we were the small school rural districts. And we'd go meet with him in the governor's mansion or in his office. And, you know, many times we had meetings. And you gain things that are, I want to call it non-quantifiable data, because I can't just throw it out here at you right now. But we do have a backbone like you are. because I can't just throw it out here at you right now, but we do have a backbone, like you are legislative liaison, Phil, and you work with Chris Doolin and different people to keep us abreast of issues and how positive that is. We have safety in numbers for rural Florida with Nefec. And I just would urge to proceed with caution because I can remember former Flagler County School Superintendent Don Kopke coming to the board meeting in the old Campbell Building and saying, please do away with Nefec. Let us take them to Flagler County where they could take all those employees and all those people and let them spend their money over there and have them at the Flagler County School District. So, you know, I've been a part of that before and fortunately we were able to keep Nefec there. And then we wound up, when Joe Pickens, we got him to run for school, for state representative, we got him an office out there. And I guess Bobby Payne still holds an office there and whoever replaces Bobby Payne will hopefully maintain an office there. And it gives us quite a bit of leverage and access to things throughout the state of Florida that we may need from time to time. And, you know, I can see the negatives.
So it's okay with you for our taxpayers to be supplementing the Nefec $800,000 in cost that it is to us as a district? Where none of the other, how many, 17 other counties in that district? Just like the Water Management District, they got 19 counties. Their headquarters is here. They have offices in three or four other counties. You know, I'm not questioning the value of Nefec and what they do for us and all those other counties. All I'm saying is they should pay us for the work we do, just like they should pay any other entity. And I'm not advocating for them to move. I don't think they would move.
I said we should be looking at ways to try to sharpen the pencil and make savings. But I don't think you need to rush out there and just tell them you to pay up or get out. I mean, it needs to be a process. And I've been through this before, Phil. It was not a positive situation. And, yeah, they might leave Putnam County. They really might.
Where would they go? And who would do their finance?
Any other county and they probably, you know, what is it now, Rick, 13 member districts?
15.
15. You know, you've got 15 other districts that would gain, I just, you know?
Those other 15 districts don't pay one dime towards personnel finance, human resources, purchasing that we all pay for just because they're here? That's absurd.
I get it. Go ahead.
Well, and because I don't, I definitely don't know as much about Nefec as I think, you know, perhaps either one of y'all. Is it possible we could have, maybe when we have another workshop of some sort, maybe, you know, discuss the topic and maybe have our financial folks tell us what exactly we're paying out, what that's going toward. And I don't care if, I mean, maybe even from Nefec, let them come tell us. But sort of see, I'd like to see both sides of that, of this whole discussion without the intent of offending Nefec right this second.
That's, how could they be offended by the fact that they've been getting away with paying 10% of what the value of what we're providing for them?
Well, and I'd like to know?
I'm not trying to offend them either. I'm just saying, you know, I'm not saying, advocating that we do the 5%. Like we get on grants for indirect costs for, you know, any grant we get and we do the same thing for their grants. We're not getting 5% of the 17 million in grants that they get. No, I'm sorry, 1.7 million in grants. We don't get 5% of that. That'd be almost $125,000 right there. So we essentially are doing all this work for free and the other districts, school districts are all getting the advantage of it.
Nefec actually started when the, I want to say it was with John Gaines, the school superintendent, when Nefec started. And they put Bob Smith out at the old Bostwick School and that was where the headquarters was, the old Bostwick School with Nefec for years. Then they moved to, down here to Highway 19 and not where they are, but, you know, little old, O.B. Hendricks was the director. You remember Mr. Hendricks, the principal?
Yeah, he was the principal.
He was the director before Bob Smith for a long time. So, you know, it's morphed over the years and it has increased in expenses and expenditures that you've pointed out. And I think that's something we need to look at, but at the same time, I don't want to cut off my nose to spite my face or if we would lose opportunities to work in a congruent fashion with other small rural districts throughout the state of Florida. I just want to find some type of common ground. You don't want them pulling out all their jobs and people and moving to another district, but.
Well, I can tell you.
And they might not do it.
I may not have as many friends as I've had in the legislature, but I guarantee you, I could stop that along with some other people. But I don't think that's what we're talking about. I'm just trying to point out, like I did last year, and I got no support, that, and when I got the numbers, and I'm be glad to give you a copy of, from our finance department, I was flabbergasted. I was absolutely, I got it from Kim. I asked her for it. Y'all are tied up. But I'm telling you, I'm not going to vote for any budget that's not going to have a substantial increase in what Nefec's paying for us. And I'm happy to go out there with them, with Rhonda and Rick or whoever in the world wants to go. But I can tell you, $125,000, when they're getting almost a million dollars worth of services, is a slap in the face to our taxpayers for the people in Putnam County that are paying taxes.
I don't have anything. I think this is one where the superintendent, if you will, sir, and Mrs. Oldham and Restodham, y'all would, you know, even with our attorney, talk this through. And who knows, just sitting down at the table talking with Mr. Warren, Winnet?
Winnet.
Winnet, okay. Would, you know, we don't know.
Well, I would recommend, I think you've talked about before, maybe setting up a time where you can go out there and have a conversation with Dr. Winnet. And just, you know, just, I think it'd be well worthwhile just to find out from him or to make him aware of what your concerns are. Him and his assistant director, Shay Starling. So that, I think that would be a logical first step.
Yes.
If you're agreeable to that.
Absolutely, yeah. I'd be happy to.
And see, this may not have even crossed their minds, you know, it's been smooth sailing. Why, you know, on their part, why even bother? Because it is smooth sailing.
I think if nothing else, just have a conversation. Yeah, I'm not saying that's going to change anything. At least have the opportunity to go out and meet with them. So if you like that, I'll be glad to set that up, so.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
Or, you know, or have the other districts, you know, the other 15 districts contribute to a fund to do our service or have one of them do it.
Then that would come from their end after, I think after you meet with them and talk. Because that's what he may end up suggesting. I mean, we don't know until we at least make an effort, so.
Well, let's just start if Mr. Leary's okay. I could schedule a meeting where you go out there and just at least have a conversation.
Yeah, absolutely, first step.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, is that it? That's all I have, so.
All right, Mrs. Pickens?
Well, Mr. Leary has a very good point. And although I'm certainly not as well-versed, I would be interested to hear straight from them too. I mean, you know, I don't want it all to be incumbent on him to report to us at a further. I mean, I think we all ought to visit there just to hear their side of it. That's my opinion. And, you know, I'm, this is a lot to take in. And then again, it's also messy, as Rhonda put it, and so that makes it, you know, a little bit. This early date was set by the state. We had to do it this early.
A workshop? No.
I'd requested that we have one and y'all agreed with that as soon as the governor signed the budget. So we'd know what kind of money we were going to get and where we were going to be.
Well?
Yeah, and you all can call a budget workshop anytime you want. You can do it 10 times a year if you want to. The only ones that I'm required by statute to do and they set the dates are the meeting to advertise, which July 24th is the last day possible and I needed as much time as possible to get a balanced budget. And then you have to have your first public hearing within five days after advertising the newspaper. So we'll have a meeting in the first part of August for that. And then we've got up until day 80. Day one is always July 1st every year. And so I've scheduled, we've scheduled the second public hearing on a date that y'all already have a board meeting scheduled, September the 17th. So you'll have your regular board meeting at 3:30. Then at 5:05, we'll have the final public hearing on the budget and everything. So it's really only three meetings that they set and we have to do. Budget workshops are totally y'all's discretion on when you want them.
So on the 24th, will we, will we get the proposed budget before then or are we going to get it on the 24th?
You'll, it'll be very close to that period of time and it's just a one-page document. These will be what we want to advertise in the paper with a balanced budget. But at that first public hearing, you're able, if you want to change that budget at any which way. I will try to get it to you as early as possible. There's not a whole lot you can tell about it because if you recall, it's a one-page compression of the budget by fund. Tells you the beginning fund balance, your expected revenues, all your expected expenditures and, you know, what your projected ending fund balance is by fund type and everything. But I'll try to get it to you as early as I can.
And if I'm just going back, the individual budgets for the departments, that is not on us. That would be on whether the money?
Yeah, we've, since way before my time, they incorporated site-based budgeting. And pretty much what that means is that you let each school and department put on their budget request. Now, we do at a school level give them so much per kid, so it is regulated by dollar amounts they earn based on their projected FTE. We tell the schools they can use that money for how they see fit. They don't have to worry about salary benefits, utilities, anything like that. So they buy supplies or health room supplies, classroom supplies, whatever they need. And departments historically, since way before my time, just put on what they felt like they needed. They don't always get that. If you can't balance the budget, you can't. But if you have the funds, you know, but they can always be changed. And if we have a shortage of funds, in the past, we have called for a halt of spending, saying, you know, you're not allowed to spend any more money. We, so things like that have occurred in the past. We've been pretty lucky over the last few years that we've had enough money to do the kind of things. And they do put in a request if it's a good bit more than what they had put in. Or even if it's more than what they put in the prior year, they'll send an email and lay out, you know, the reasoning why they need that money and everything. But again, you know, it's not my choice or our choice in here on whether we give them to it or not. I mean, we just try to balance the budget.
Okay, Mr. Buckle?
I was asked a question at a meeting the other night about overflow capacity of our schools. If we did get a massive subdivision in and I pointed out that I'd met with the superintendent and we do have schools in reserve that can be utilized at a moment's notice if we need to with, if that were to happen. So even if we did get 700 houses or 1,400 homes, we've got schools in the Polatka area. We've got schools in West Putnam that could handle, you know, handle it until we got them all up to safety standards that now everybody seems to think we're making fun of, but it's a requirement, you know, that it's real, the way windows are placed and things in schools. But besides that, I, you know, I'd kind of be interested to hear what the people at Nefec say. That's going to be, that's an interesting conversation. But, you know, I remember when they used to order all the supplies for the county and the school district. And then the school district wound up being the one that ordered all the supplies for the, for them, for all of them. And now I don't even know if they order their own supplies anymore if we do it, but it'll be interesting to see what you find out. That's good.
Thank you. Mrs. Wagner?
Just one thing I would, I would like to, if you could follow up on sending the PowerPoints. I'd like to review all of this because like Ms. Pickens said, it's a lot for those of us who are not financial experts there, but.
I'll be happy to. Susan called me this afternoon and said Mike McDaniel's wanting your power, wanting your documents to go. I'm like, I'm not done. They're done now, so I'll be happy to share.
And I will, just in response to one thing Phil had said, he mentioned we should be working from a zero-based budget and that the budget has increased over the past several years and I'm assuming a lot, well, it's probably due to many, many factors. But, I mean, pretty much everything has increased as far as costs, period. But it does concern me when we're seeing, if we're seeing decreased enrollment and we're having to spend more with decreased enrollment and that's going to catch up to us, that certainly is a concern of mine as well. And then on the Nefec issue, I'm just really interested in more information. Kind of like Holly had mentioned, I'd like to hear all of this. And, you know, if we, if we go, yeah, you know, we are getting plenty of benefit one way or the other on this, then great, let's continue. If not, if we're footing, you know, a million dollars a year that a lot of districts are benefiting from and, you know, maybe we could at least have that conversation, like he was saying, and see where we are. But I'm curious on that information as well. So I don't know how the best way to, you know, for all of us?
How about if we just start off and let Mr. Leary maybe have a conversation first and if for some reason we need to, you know, maybe have them come do a presentation later?
Okay, here's my two cents. I feel like you should have that conversation. You hear the concerns and we want more information. I think it would be better if you were to meet with Mr.?
Winnet?
Winnet. I always call him Warren. Yes, yes, Dr. Patrick, yeah, Warren.
So I'm hearing you say you'd like for me to meet with them initially?
Yes, and even if Mr. Leary goes with you, but I think you should be a part of this. You are the leader of this issue.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just trying to kind of find out what the wishes of the board is.
Okay.
That's fine with me. I mean.
Fine with me, but you've got to make Shay Starling sit in that meeting too.
Yeah.
I'd like to see him do it.
Yeah.
All right.
Let me just contact them maybe later today and kind of see what their timeframe is and all that and we can, we can start the process.
Yes, sir. All right. I would like it to flow in that.
Sure.
The only thing is we would need to come to some resolution, good, bad or indifferent, I don't know. And we'd probably have to vote, you know, as far as?
Once the conversation?
Right, promulgating the budget, you know, so that we can either say it's going to stay the same or we're going to get additional income from them to offset our costs. So, and again, I think they're doing a fantastic job. I'm not for moving them. But, you know, it just seems that 15 other school districts getting the services that we're paying for, this doesn't make sense to me. And if I was in Mr. Winnet's or Mr. Starling's position, if, I mean, if the roles were reversed, if we were only paying 10 cents on the dollar for services we're receiving for purchasing human resources and finances, I'd keep my mouth shut too. I wouldn't say anything because I want to keep having that sweet deal. And so.
All right.
Anything further?
Okay, I just want to take this opportunity to, well, with Mrs. Oldham, your swan song, you know, if you will. An excellent report, even though it is still, there are many moving pieces and things will be provided later on the 24th. You will have the rest of the monies in and the reports and requests and all of that. But what we have now is enough to kind of put us on, almost on overload. But anyway, just?
And if you think of anything, email us and we can provide it to you.
Yes, you're going to be with us through October, right?
October? I hadn't heard that one. October? I hadn't heard that one happen. She's just saying, "Nurk."
Well, at least-
I was supposed to be going April thirtieth.
At least of us approving the budget, I mean-
I will, I will certainly provide help.
You'll need to be here for the meetings once it's done. I mean, we're just, you know, set them, you know, that's kind of a formality. But at least through thirty-first, okay.
Yes, sir. You won't mind me there, too, sir.
He knows where to find me.
For the next ten years?
Ten years.
Every July she comes, right?
Do you have her number?
Do you know?
Better phone.
That's even better.
Yeah.
I'm joking.
But just to, to, yes, just to thank each of you for your, for your input, for your questions, uh, because it helps us to better understand and to see things, uh, not totally from your perspective, but to get a, get a better grasp of what is-
Madam Chair, I just wanna say a credit to Rhonda and Jonathan and our executive team. We have spent, we've had all day budget workshops on our own, and just putting chart paper all over the place and looking at priorities and, you know, that type thing. And, 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 we are not facing a lot of the same, um, stuff that a lot of other districts are facing right now, because we, we've tried to measure that and, um, plan for this perfect storm that we're about in, or we're in, you know, with Esther going away and everything else. So, so just wanna commend all those folks around the table who've worked hard on it.
And hearing what you all, uh, Mrs. France and all of you did, uh, with those, uh, positions that are vital, that are crucial to the district, the, the ones that the state says that we must have, yet we were paying for them with this. And, and, and to, to be able to work it out so that we are able to, because they made a tremendous difference when they came and gave us the STEM report of how well the students are doing. And then most certainly, we're gonna be in compliance with what the state is requiring for those intensive teachers, uh, reading teachers. So, um, it just, it is a team effort, and it takes all of us working together. And most especially, yes, we have to be physically responsible.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
And Travis is in the room, but our, our school resource officers are actually paid, we pay them out of our Safe Schools allocation, correct, Travis?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And as their costs go up, they, I mean, they get raises, their costs, their, whatever they have to do. That is also, any, any increase in that, you know, helps to cover their costs. So again, that is a hundred percent funded through that allocation. And, um, beyond that, anything above that would have to come out of general fund.
Yes.
So we are utilizing all that, um, money that, categorical, if you will, to pay for that, that service.
Yeah, it's one of the remaining FEFP categoricals.
Right.
And it is one of the ones, that and mental health are the two that increased this year.
And your example in the other meeting from the incident out at Merrose tells us how, how crucial they are. So, so we need to, you know, just continue doing what we're doing and see wherever we can save.
Well, again, I'll, I'll say this, and again, I, I don't wanna say too much, because a lot of this is security-
Yes, sir.
Stuff we don't wanna tell the world. But we have more than just our school resource officers out there.
Right.
And obviously, we have a number of people in place that are always there to protect our schools. So I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, sir. Okay. Um, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing.
And thank you for being here with us.
Sorry I was late. I was in court.
That's okay. You take care. All right.
Yeah.
Mrs. Superintendent?
That's all. Thank you all. And, um, hopefully, um, have a better idea of where we are in the budget now compared to where we'll be in, you know, July.
And before we close out, uh, I've already shared with Mr. Leary, he will be chairing the twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, it is a must that I ask to be excused. Uh, you know, you have to take care of family. You have to do what you have to do. That's what-
I understand.
That's what I'll be doing. But I am gonna request, uh, uh, permission to, to view it. And hopefully, this time, you will be able to hear me. I could see you all and hear your conversations.
If we can't, just give us thumbs up or thumbs down.
We couldn't even get-
I know.
I could see you all, but you couldn't see me.
Right, right.
So, yes, sir. But if we can get that-
We'll have our IT folks make sure that.
If we can get those kinks ironed out, I would appreciate it. All right?
Uh, anything else to come before us?
I just have one thing. Yesterday, I, I stopped by the Crescent City Junior/Senior High School to go to, um, a volleyball conditioning. And on my way, I encountered thirty young men carrying weights, varying weights, from the old weight room that will, will be torn down to the new weight room. And I asked them if they thought they had to work out once they got it all moved. And they said, "No, ma'am." So that was pretty neat to see that. But it was seriously thirty kids carrying bars, weights, and then turning around, getting more, bringing them in. So-
Worked out.
So things are happening.
Progress is happening. That's great.
Okay. Anything else to come before us?
Thank you all for being here.
Okay.